I'm calling this meeting of the Town of Silver City Council to order. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. And the first item on the agenda is public input. First on the list is Lee Gruber.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Councilors. What? White button. Okay, there you go. Good evening. This is our last-minute decision on my part to say something this evening. It's caused just because there are too many times that I hear negative comments. And I basically am a very positive person and believe in the community that we live in and its people. And so I just wanted to say that I believe that Silver City is uniquely positioned to remake itself. And we're in the process of doing so. And it takes a long time. I've been in business here for 25 years now. It took 15 years to get the local population to recognize the fact that there was a tile maker in our community. 15 years, and I'm a hard worker. So I have a lot of patience. And I see a lot of changes taking place in our community. I work very often till 7:00 or 7:30 at night. And I'm just amazed at the number of cars that are lining the streets now downtown, the number of people who are walking around, the number of tourists that I see in the daytime asking directions, et cetera. And so I want to just speak publicly about the need to look positively at what's going on here and to take that seriously. We are developing ecotourism, which will be huge for us in the future. I talked to Martin today, and we talked about Tommy Knocker and Tori LaHila and the Signal Peak Challenge and the Grand Fund O. And it's people like Martin, and Jack, and myself, and Fay, and Kelly, who are just working so hard to push our community forward in a way that's positive and supportive. We have a cultural heritage that exists here unlike anywhere else, from the member sites, the WNMU museum, mining, ranching, the Spanish and Mexican heritage, the Apache heritage, cowboys, our university, and our art scene. It's really something that we can be so proud of. And I just want to remind everybody in the community that we are trying so hard to embrace what we have and move us in a positive direction. Thank you.
Ro, Ro Torriato. Thank you very much. I'm just gonna take just a minute. This weekend they had the actual Beatles tour, Twisted Shout, and they actually had the gathering there at the museum for the 50-year anniversary. And I just would like to say that Patricia Caro did a fantastic job bringing in these individuals. It was a concert to see. And I do thank Carmen Vindalin to put this together also. And the only thing is, I happen to be at every event if I can make it. So thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is council comments. Council Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say something about the Silver City Police Department. These guys have a lot of jobs to do all over the place. People are getting very impatient with them because things have been happening. Well, the Silver City Police Department cannot be in every place and every time, especially downtown. I'm asking the public that if you want help, you have to also help yourselves so that they can help you in return. And the Silver City Police Department, they are doing an excellent job, even though some people might not agree with it, but they are. Getting back to the concert, it was a very nice concert. I was 14 years old when I saw it on TV. And I saw it on the Etzel. And I was down at the old Baldin Alley behind Wells Fargo. I waited 43 years to see him. The only difference is now, the heaven needs a day. And with that, thank you.
Councilor Ayman Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to give kudos to the museum and the Museum Society for the events last Friday and for the Beatles tribute. I played Sergeant Pepper's every day of my senior year of high school, so I knew all of the lyrics. I want to talk about something pretty serious here. A week ago, on Tuesday, the 16th, there was a public forum here in these chambers that was called by two members of our county commissioners, Commissioner Billings and Commissioner Edwards. And it was to be an open forum to discuss the decision-making processes for the cancer center at our hospital. And I was really impressed, by and large, with the concern, the empathy, the outpouring of feeling of the people who participated. I know that the interim CEO, Ms. John Taveras, was there. And I know, because I got a notice this morning, that tomorrow morning, on Wednesday, May 24th, here in these chambers, the Granite County Board of Commissioners has a special meeting at 9:00 a.m. And the purpose of this meeting is for discussion regarding a request for proposal process for operation of the cancer center. So as just a concerned citizen, as well as speaking from another elected official, I want to say that that's happening, I do want to let people know that we are not the Board of Trustees. The Town Council of Silver City is not the Board of Trustees. We are an independent, you know, governing body about the governance of the town, but not the governance of the hospital. And so I'm trying to direct people who have concerns that they want to direct to the Board of Trustees to the proper place, and it's not here. And thank you. And I want to thank the public who are here with hopes for a better future. I too am optimistic and am willing to work really hard for a better future for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bediston.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to also extend my congratulations to the Silver City Museum, to Carmen Vindalin's staff and volunteers, and folks that provided materials for the 50th anniversary exhibit at the museum on Friday. Patricia Caro did a really nice job of providing materials, and of course, Jose Reyes Booth were there from Vietnam. And I just thought it was a really nice opening to see Susan Barry and her husband there. It was just, it just kind of rounded it all out. But I also, I just, I had the best time on Saturday night. And I know that Patricia and her daughter know how much I appreciate them bringing what a fantastic group. Because if you sit right in the back, they kind of look like the Beatles. They haven't aged. And you can, you know, if you're old, you sit in the back, they look like they're still, you know, around, they sound like it. Great concert, and I was really pleased with all of those that turned out. But both of you outbid yourselves in getting that group here. So thank you for bringing them to Silver City. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Caro.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, everyone's talked about the concert, but I want to make a really important distinction. Our museum director is very specific about the fact that the museum and the Museum Society work on different projects. So I want to make it clear that the museum, the director and the staff worked on the exhibit, and the Museum Society was the ones that were responsible for the concert, led by Patricia Caro, who is the fundraising chair for the Museum Society Board. And it's really important to me to thank that Museum Society Board, because since my mom, I've been watching them work very hard the past few months to make Saturday Night a success. And I was just thrilled that there was so many people of different walks of life, different ages, different groups. So it was nice to have us all together as a community. And I too would like to thank the band, even though they're not from this community, but they'll find out that we talked about them at Town Council, so they'll be happy about that, I'm sure. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I've received a couple of phone messages this past week, and they were actually both from the same gentleman. I'm hoping that he's watching this, because something that happens is, if you don't give your full name and your phone number at the beginning of your message, can you leave messages for us? Sometimes they get cut off. And so if they get cut off, then we don't know who it is we need to respond to, because of the way the email system is, the email writes out the voicemail for us. So if you're gonna leave a voicemail for any of us, if you could please say your name and your phone number first, and then tell us what your concern is, that way we can get back to you, please.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Captain Portillo, welcome tonight. Thank you for being here. Well, I too, Lee, have a real positive outlook on Silver City. I love going downtown and seeing all the cars, all the people. It's evidence that we're doing something right in Silver City. And we have a tremendous support group of people who work for the city, the different elements that make this city work, the police department, the fire department, all of the departments under Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown himself. These are the people that make this city work. And then last but not least, one of the things that contribute to what Lee was talking about are the volunteers, the people that spend hundreds and hundreds of hours that make all of these events happen. This is what makes Silver City such a great place to be in. So I too want to add my thanks to all of those who contribute. Next item on the agenda, Councilor Ayman Smith.
Do I have relative, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your speech about volunteers just triggered another call for potential volunteers for the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a very important commission. It's actually a policy and a decision-making, as well as an advisory commission, and it looks at land use codes and land information. And we really need to have some dedicated volunteers to go to work on that commission. If I were not a councilor, I would be volunteering for that commission, but I can't. So I want to put a call out to people who are thinking that they might want to step up and do something that will be of enormous benefit to our community, looking to joining the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Any other comments? Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the May 9, 2017 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ayman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I approve the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of the Town of Silver City from May 23rd, 2017.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Bediston.
I second the motion, stated.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is reports. First report will be given by Kelly Kennington, the Executive Director of the Silver City Arts and Cultural District. Kelly?
Hi, thank you. I want to thank the council mayor and town officials for being here tonight. I also wanted to congratulate the Museum Society Board and the Silver City Museum Board on the success of the exhibit and the concert. So tonight I'll be presenting on a kiosk as part of a grant we have with the Department of Transportation, and also giving my third quarter report. So just to give a little background, and you should have received some mock-up drawings in your packets of the kiosk, but this was a part of a grant that the Silver City Arts and Cultural District received on behalf of the Town of Silver City from the Department of Transportation in 2015. It was for a total of around $45,000, and there's three main components to the grant. There will be a kiosk that will be located outside in the Greenway Visitor Center, which is what will be moving tonight, a map, which will be featured on the kiosk, as well as available in a printed brochure and available for digital download. And also, the third component is wavefinding signage, which will then lead people to different popular trail systems within the area. So I just wanted to go over the kiosk quickly. It'll be located at the central location, which is now dubbed the Downtown and Silver City Greenways Trailhead, and it is also the Commune Divide Trailhead. It will feature a large graphic panel with maps and trail information. And we will be working with the same landscape architect who recently designed Main Street Plaza. He's helped with the overall design of the kiosk, where to locate it, as well as assisted in finding a contractor that can provide and install the kiosk altogether. So the size of the kiosk roof is nine feet long and seven feet wide. This will support a graphic board that's approximately 3 by 4.5 feet, and it will be drove small solar panels to light and make the kiosk functional outside of business hours. So if hikers or trail users approach the area at night, they'll be able to still see the information. Given that the area outside of that is currently a little busy with benches, a newly installed water fountain, which we received a grant for in the summer and when the town stalled in the fall. In various signs, we decided on a location that would be out of the way and intentional so that it doesn't compete with different areas that are, it doesn't compete with different functions of the area as they are now, and doesn't block existing pathways, signs, important views, or other elements. It features a brown metal roof to match the building roof right now, and the green, Silver City green, that other existing features are colored on the outside. The base will be a brick cap that matches the building as well as plain concrete for sides. And then the wall will be a DGR metal, which is made for outdoor projects and is featured in playgrounds and is vandal resistant as much as it can be, I suppose. And we've been working with our landscape architect and also will be working with the graphic designer to make sure, because of his remarkable challenges, that the kiosk itself is ADA compliant, as well as the text is readable and ADA compliant. So at this time, we're ready to move forward. We have a contract firm lease already. He specializes in kiosk construction. He's an estate contractor and happens to sell and install one of the only brands of kiosks with integrated solar lighting, as well as the same graphic panels that we're hoping to make the material out of. He'll take care of the lighting, kiosk insulation, and graphic board, making sure they all work together seamlessly. The quote we received from Nate with the fitment in our allocated budget for the kiosk element from the grant, and he's worked with Silver City in the past, I believe, to install playground equipment and other such things. So we need Nate to move forward in coordination with a quid in the town to purchase the kiosk, which will take approximately six weeks to be manually manufactured and delivered to the site to be installed. Keeping in mind that this grant must be expended by October of this year, so we're working diligently to complete it on time. So again, the third element of the grant is wavefinding signage, and by working with the kiosk and engaging with graphic designer for the map design, we'll be able to turn around their attention to other aspects of the project. So we'd like to move ahead with the steps needed to finish the kiosk element at this time, and would like the councils to go ahead to do that. I also just wanted to mention that the work completed on behalf of this grant will be one component of a larger version, a larger vision, I should say, of the Downtown and Silver City Greenways Trailhead. And I'm very pleased to announce that Arts and Cultural District recently received worth that they received another grant from the Department of Transportation with the Transportation Alterment Program to redo that area in a total sum of $332,000 in terms of money. So I'm gonna pause, take my breath, and allow you to ask questions about the grants and more comments, and then I'll go ahead and move forward as always.
Councilor Bediston.
So thanks, Kelly, for bringing this forward. The only concern that I had mentioned to you prior to this that I would mention was the actual dimensions and making sure that it is ADA compliant. I'm a little concerned with the bench aspect underneath the...
I don't have a...
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Underneath the, I just want to ensure that someone who's in a wheelchair isn't then further distant than someone who is standing and who can bend over to look at the sign. I don't want to make it so that someone in a wheelchair can't come up to the sign. So I would ask that whatever they can do to ensure that there's access for a wheelchair user underneath that sign in terms of coming up as close as possible. So I know that you guys are concerned about the ADA, we just want to make, I just want to make sure that it truly is ADA compliant, because sometimes, you know, contractors kind of think it may be, but then someone will bring up something like what I just said, the concern about the bench. Since there are other benches in the area, right?
Yes, that's a good point.
Okay, great. So that's my concern with it, so thank you.
Thank you. And we'll work with our landscape architect to make sure that everything is set and ADA compliant.
Thank you back on YouTube, just speaking of Councilor Bediston. The other concern I have is the height. If you, when you look at the picture that you sent us, I know you don't have it in front of you right now, but something to consider is, I'm a very, I'm a very tall person, and when I'm in my wheelchair, I'm waist-level height with an average person. So if you look at the scale that you have there, that would mean that I could look at the bar underneath it at my eye level. So, I mean, granted, people still will have to look up and whatever, but if you think about that, I would only be able to see the bottom part of that map with clarity. The rest of it would be really hard to see in a wheelchair.
Okay. Thank you. So would it be okay if I go back to our landscape architect, have him look into these to make sure it truly is ADA compliant, and then check in with you very soon, because we want to get rolling into this project?
Call me with the ADA compliant stuff, because it's, all of this is going, actually going through the town.
Right.
Because it's a grant that was awarded to them, but it has to go through the town. The town is contracting with the entity to pay for the project. It is through the DOT, so it does have to be ADA compliant, or they're not even gonna pay for it. So that's one thing that is required. So we'll guarantee that that is taken care of and is approved by the DOT before we actually construct. Okay? So we just send it to the DOT to make sure that they are okay with it. And the entity that we're working with is Exerplay. Exerplay, they are the entity that installed all the playground equipment at Penny Park. So they're very well-versed in ADA compliance and kidney issues and everything like that. So, you know, I know the person that she's been working with very well. He's a person we actually work with on Penny Park, so we will work with them and make sure that he knows our concerns. Okay?
Councilor Ayman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Kelly, I've just a quick question, and that is that this grant also contains wavefinding signage. And is that wavefinding signage gonna mirror the way that this looks, or have we seen examples of what that's gonna look like?
No. The amount allocated for the wavefinding signage is less than the other components. It was estimated when the grant was written that it would cost less. So that's something that we need to move forward with, and I'm hoping to after this is on the motion. But I was hoping to actually basically order signage out of a catalog, not have it customed, but to have it fit in with, you know, be appropriate and fit in with the aesthetic that Silver City already has.
Thank you. I'd just like to ask that you include some town folks in that, please.
Yes.
I, you know, I appreciate that. And then the second thing is, I'm thrilled that the Trailhead has received a grant for work on it.
Yeah, I'm very excited as well.
Thank you for doing the work on that. I'm thrilled with that outcome. Will you?
Councilor Bediston.
Just a quick question for Alex. So any design aspects still have to be approved by the council anywhere along the way with both grants? Like the wavefinding, just do we have to...
Well, see, this didn't even have to come to you, but I asked you to bring it to you because of the dollar amount. And I knew that you would want to see it. The wavefinding signs, I think we should bring them back to, for you to make sure they're okay. But as far as the Trailhead project wants the construction, the Town Council is gonna have to approve that.
Right.
Because that's a large enough project that it has, the Town Council has to approve it.
Thank you.
So because you're gonna be having to approve it, and it's not just like a regular road that it's, it's a street sidewalk stuff, this is gonna be a lot more complex than I think that Kelly should bring, as the project is being developed, she should bring it to let you know what's happening so that they don't get too far along the project and then you not agree with what's happened since the beginning. So periodically, I'm gonna ask that she bring updates to you through that project, because it is such a big project.
And just ahead of that, that project, we received it now, but it won't go into effect until 2018, 2018. So that grant's for design and construction, though.
It's like the Cooper Street project where year one, they give you the money for design, so they've got a year to design it. And so they've got a whole year that you can bring updates. And then year two, they give you the money for the construction, just like what happened with Cooper Street. It's the same thing. It's a two-year project, and it's just like the bike striping, the bicycle. It's the same exact program. They give you design money for year one, year two is construction.
Well, I just, I want to say congratulations again. It's stupendous. It's actually, it's fabulous, it really is, that the ACB is going out and getting this money, getting these grants from DOT. I just can't thank you enough for that, because it does move our town forward. It does bring that, what we want to do is to keep moving forward and bring interest into the town. I guess the only other, I'm confused a little bit between the wavefinding signs that you're talking about that go with this project with the kiosk. How does that meet with what the Main Street had brought us, that we were not...
It's a separate project. But, you know, we were sitting in all those meetings because it is important for us that all the signage in town, since there can be a lot of noise, looks cohesive and is aesthetically pleasing.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. I know there's one on the floor, then. So I've just gone ahead and set this on a slideshow, because I tend to forget to change the slides. But in the presentation, we've included some of our recent advertising, as well as some objectives for Silver City, like recent mentions and articles, and a list of advertising collaborative permits that we worked with this past fiscal. Hopefully, you'll find that list impressive. We try to collaborate with as many entities as possible to stretch everyone's marketing dollars, and Arts and Cultural District is able to get Best Buy opportunities with different marketing partners, so we're able to pass those savings on to our partners. And also, I wanted to mention that... Sorry, it's not working properly. Okay, so it shouldn't be sliding through. I also wanted to mention that something that we are working towards is incorporating market diversity in power photography. We're working with our photographer now and try to incorporate some examples to showcase that in the slideshow as well. So I wanted to mention that Grant County Tourism has been an instrumental advertising partner with us all throughout this fiscal year, as well as in the third quarter. We collaborate with Tucson, Southern Streetcar, Albuquerque, Tucson, and El Paso airports. We collaborate with Tucson, Southern Streetcar, Albuquerque, Tucson, and El Paso airports, as well as social media, which has seen show increases this past quarter with Instagram growing by 28% and Facebook by 10%. So this one up here on the slide right now has been featured in a number of publications. Usually when we do advertisement in New Mexico Magazine, we mirror it in the Rail, on the Railrunner and on our airport advertising. So publications we're continuing to advertise with are as below: New Mexico Magazine, obviously, Railrunner, Railrunner, airports I just mentioned, Sunset Magazine, Edible Baja Arizona. And we also featured some advertisements in the new, of the new publications this past quarter, including Edible Santa Fe and Gerardo Magazine. And I passed out some examples of publications. Edible Santa Fe came down in February and had a fabulous article written about Silver City, multi-pages, and their vehicle issues. So that was really exciting for us to collaborate with them, and also they travel to Mexico Instagram group who had done an institute here in the summertime. Also, I passed out Edible Baja Arizona, which is another one we do. And typically, we've had two pages working with us. They're really helpful in matching advertising dollars, but we've been able to expand that section this past issue. So collaborative advertising dollars take in from Fiesta Latina, Play Festival, a lot of local businesses, so we have a good Silver City presence in that. So this one up on the screen right now, this is one example of how we're able to stretch those marketing dollars. So essentially, we go into New Mexico Magazine and we're placing a full-page ad. To upgrade the ad for us, it's a minimal cost to what it would be for Fiesta Latina, for example, to buy a half-page outright. And also, I tried to sprinkle in, we're continuing with the Silver City is New Mexico True on some, and then also you should be seeing some of our new branding on the other, some of the other examples. As far as attractions, our top three attractions continue to rotate through Hila National Forest, historic downtown, excuse me, and Hila Road Dollings. So those consistently remain our top attractions. And I have some other information that I haven't prepared for your questions.
All right. Councilwoman Madison?
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. I liked it, it's a piece of diversity of it, which is that I particularly like many advertising shows are downtown. I like that very much. I do have a couple of questions for you, and I was intrigued by where people are coming from. So if you get a little more specific here, it says that the states that people are coming from are Arizona, New Mexico, and Wisconsin. So can you tell me how many people in Wisconsin are finding out about us?
So actually written to our last year's, or this fiscal year's logbook proposal, we specifically said that we wanted to reach out to the coldest areas within the United States, and Wisconsin was among them, so we did targeted social media advertising to the three, I mean, three cities from the top five coldest states, and Wisconsin was among them. So hopefully that's a direct result of our advertising there.
So there's social media advertising, but indeed what we're seeing is people who are traveling from those coldest climes to warmer climes. Then maybe we should see an increase from like Wisconsin, Wyoming, Montana, Dakotas. I'm just thinking of the cold states.
Yeah, and that's something that we continue, we want to continue to reach out to them as well because our other main market is the dry market.
Yeah.
Which has been working well, especially in conjunction with New Mexico True. Their big thing right now is road troopers. So we're trying to pick it back off of that, and Silver City's featured in some of their, some of their road trips right now.
Do you know how the folks from Germany are finding out about us? Germany and Canada?
You know, we haven't, we haven't done any targeted advertising there yet. We would like to, but I think that there's just a fascination with the West and Germany, honestly. And I don't know, you know, we can move into that more.
I would really love to have that looked into more because I know there's a fascination with the West and Germany, and I know that they come and they stay. As compared to folks from maybe Tucson or Las Cruces, who often come for a part of the day and then go back home, I'd really like to see more folks coming and staying in our wonderful lodging here.
Yeah.
As part of this outreach, since lodgings taxes, but pays for these promotions.
Yeah, our top five international destinations in the third quarter are Canada, Australia, Germany, Switzerland, and then Netherlands.
Yeah, so often, also are interested in the West, but definitely Germany. And I remember talking when I was at the visitor's center the other day with some folks from England who had come here and fortuitously had come just in time for the rodeo, and they were the happiest Brits I'd ever met. With the idea of seeing a real rodeo in a real western town was like, they really liked that. I have one more question, and I know it's going to take up a lot of time here, but Kelly, can you tell me how you're calculating return on investment for these ads and social media and digital advertising and even outdoor advertising? How are you knowing that these promotions are actually catching attention and bringing people to Silver City?
Yeah. So we gather statistics in the visitor's center, and in this past fiscal as well, we've installed a more high-tech program collecting data. We have a tablet out there that's basically a little survey people can look through and fill out, so we're getting more rates of data than we ever have before. So we're doing it that way. We do receive information from reader forums for certain publications such as Sunset Magazine and True West. And then social media statistics are providing a really good look into, you know, who is lacking our agents, who's engaging with our hosts. So that's a good indicator, and also website analytics. Where, how many hits are we getting a day, and is that going up? And are those people coming through? So also, I wanted to share with you, we collect how people heard about Silver City at the visitor's center. So these are people who have come into the visitor's center and filled out this survey. Internet research was the top reason how they heard about Silver City in the third quarter. Second was a travel website, third was social media, fourth, saw a roadmap, and fifth was other. So oftentimes, with marketing, it's the number of points of contact before people decide to make a trip. But if that wasn't anything, internet, travel, website, social media, those are upcoming and those are working for your Silver City lately.
But we don't know what internet really means.
So internet could be a combination of a travel website and social media, or our website, which we just brought out a new version of in November.
Or it could be just putting into a search engine, New Mexico, and seeing what comes up, which could be online articles.
Yeah, or it could be, so in this slideshow as well, I'm not sure if it's filtered, but I listed a number of recent articles where we've been mentioned. So we've been mentioned a lot in True West, Top Towns, Sunset Magazine, XPE, the Maverick Network, New Mexico Magazine, Reader Trust Awards. We are getting a lot of attention lately. And also, I wanted to add that Sunset Magazine, we've developed a good relationship with them, and they had a celebration weekend recently and asked partners to send them information for this, where they have 8,000-plus fans come through this exhibit, paid to come through this Sunset Magazine, except to experience the lifestyle of Sunset Magazine. And our rep just got back to me and said that Silver City was the only location in New Mexico that sent materials, so there was a lot of, a lot of interest from people who view it as a destination.
That's great, and that's exciting. I know that I'm very much in favor of the new data collection at the visitor's center. So one of the things I would be really interested in is I know that they're asking whether or not they, people have stayed one, two, or three or more nights, and have asked if they're staying in hotels. So that could lead you to an estimate of actually how much spend those tourists who at least came to the visitor's center have done in hotels. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, so our top numbers, 54%, 52% indicated that they stayed in a hotel for last quarter, 5.8% in event breakfast, 4.0% in the internet rentals such as Airbnb, 14.7% in RV park, and 11% in a camp.
So percentages are interesting, but the actual number of hotel and actual, you know, B&Bs, nights would give us a dollar amount.
Yes.
In town. I mean, you know, we have a couple of lodges in the county, but in town, it would give us an idea, and that would be really helpful if something happened. I'd like to encourage you to look a little more financially at the return on investment rather than, as well as information in front of us.
Yes, and we also do track number of nights people are staying, and if this is their first trip to Silver City, and if not, how many times have they come back, which is really interesting. But I'm also looking forward to the new person that the town has more specific data fills out with you. That would be really helpful as well.
I agree. Thank you.
Councilwoman Madison?
So thank you for that. That really gave us a lot of information, and I think if, it may be helpful, I don't know, I haven't looked at what the visitor's center does, but to ask if the stays in town versus out in the county, just to kind of get an idea if those hotel rooms are local, are within town. I was also going to suggest that in the future to think about having at key sites, like when the University Museum finally reopens, the Silver City Museum that is open, the Hila Quaid dwellings, is maybe seeing if they could have those sorts of touchscreen pads that could ask those, you know, if they're willing to have them, because I know that we would be, if they didn't go to the visitor's center. Please fill this out, let us know where you heard about us, and where you heard about the town, and where are you staying? Because that would give really a great amount of data, too.
That is a great idea because currently, we only, we do have reporting from the Hila Quaid dwellings and the museums, but that would provide more comprehensive data.
Just a suggestion to think about as an option to get more things and provide them. I mean, speaking from the western museum standpoint, we're really not functioning the way we normally do, so that data is not going to be necessarily as helpful. But certainly, getting that information even from like City of Rocks, did you stop there on your way up, you know? Stay in Silver City? Are you, you know, I think that if we can partner with different groups to do that, it might be really beneficial for us to know, and I think that that might be something that the new person at the town beginning will be happy to receive some of that information as well, so, but thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to express my thanks to Ms. Kensington. At the last meeting, I was the one that was concerned about diversity in the pictures, and she dealt with that immediately. And I mean, by immediately, I mean the next morning she had a meeting about that. And I just really appreciate the fact that you come to these, to these reports, and you listen to what we're telling you, and you do take that under advisement. I appreciate that because not everybody does that, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Kensington, if you have anything else?
Oh, I'm so royal now, Ms. Kensington. No, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that very enlightening report. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Mr. Brown, do you have anything there?
Captain Portillo might have some comments.
Okay. Captain Portillo?
I was actually a little prepared for questions that you guys may have for me.
Yeah, I think everyone's talking about downtown stuff. Go ahead.
Councilwoman Madison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Captain Portillo, thank you so much for coming. I do have some questions. During the last week, four citizens have complained to me about some behavior of what might be transitory folks downtown. I'm not sure. Specifics included a person yelling obscenities at passersby, people appearing to be asleep or incapacitated lying on side streets, aggressive panhandling. And one day last week, when I was downtown, I had the experience of asking, of having to ask two men who were blocking the sidewalk and speaking kind of loudly and aggressively and profanely if they could just please let me by because the sidewalk was too high for me to step off. Otherwise, I would have been stepping off. So that made me wonder about the police forces plan for foot patrols, bicycle patrols, especially now that we are entering tourist season, and we want to have tourists feel comfortable downtown. Can you address that?
Yes, ma'am. I do have some stats here as far as the foot patrol that we've conducted for the past month, end of March, April, and end of May. Just if you guys would like to have those also in the future. Also, yeah, we do have two certified bike patrol officers. We use them during the tour of the Hila. Of course, now that it's getting warmer, obviously, we're going to encourage more foot patrols. We had you have a certified bike patrol officer on day shift, which helps. The one on graveyard, we usually don't utilize as much. We like to use them during the daytime and the evenings times. As far as obstructing movement on the sidewalks, just one I really encourage is the citizens of Silver City, if they have any issues or they see any, if they have any concerns of that nature, to please report it to us. We would like to be everywhere at once, but there's some times where we can't actually witness it, and a lot of these, we actually do need to witness it in order to issue a citation on the spot. But this is why I want to encourage citizens so they can stick around if they report it because a lot of the times, whenever they report it, they're either a passerby, and they're not always around to provide the information, and we're looking for the individual, but we still want to talk to the reporting party. And the reason for that is we can gather information from the reporting party, gather witness information, get the identity of the person, and we can always file a summons. And for that particular situation you just addressed, there would be obstructing movement. The city ordinance 340178. So for example, if a person's on the sidewalk, if you're just standing on the sidewalk enjoying the view downtown, there's no really violation there. But in the case where if another individual is walking and he's purposely standing there to block the other individual's movement, then there is a potential violation there. So if we, if we witness problems like that downtown, of course, we want to be proactive towards it. But again, I really want to encourage the citizens to come forward with those issues so we can look into them.
Thank you. So if there are currently foot patrols downtown, are there going to be, and you said that there's a bicycle officer who works grave shift, but he's probably not riding around?
I don't know that for a fact. I got to look into that, but that doesn't mean that I don't want him to ride around. Let me give you an example. As far as right now, sometimes when we have three officers on day shift, so we have to have a minimum of three. One will be in the north district, one will be in the south district, and of course, your shift commander. Sometimes when we have a lot of emergency calls for service, it's hard for us to prioritize and get to them. Not that we don't want to, but there's sometimes we do have to prioritize. If we have a fourth officer, that fourth officer can roll in, we can set a timeframe or a period of time to send him in our problem areas, and of course, downtown is one of our areas that we want to have high visibility. So we're going to be utilizing those bike patrol officers more, especially when we have more officers at one particular time on a shift.
What, can you tell me when grave shift ends, if day shift begins?
Yes. Graveyards begins 10:00 at night and ends at 6:00 in the morning.
Okay. Because I had one of the people who was concerned, was actually concerned because she goes to the coffee shop really early in the morning and was getting a costume and seeing people riding around, so that might be really good for that, for the grave shift bicycle patrol officer. I understand that you're shorthanded, and I know that the police are absolutely willing to respond immediately. It's been my experience. And I'm hoping that you've identified particularly troubled areas or potentially troubled areas downtown where you would want to have those foot presence really visible because officer on foot, I think, is more visible than an officer in the car.
And also encourage officers, what, in my patrol division, to not just be walking, interacting with owners, citizens. interacting. Business owners, citizens, I highly encourage all officers to continue to do that. Any issues that, that you see that, of course, we can do better, or if we're not seeing that, I would really appreciate. Go ahead and put it in.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Captain Portillo?
Captain Portillo, I still have a concern about the intersection of Sixth and, uh, Bullard. Uh, this past Saturday, I was down there and I just kind of observed for maybe fifteen or twenty minutes. And I saw three or four cars that approached the stop sign, slowed down, and then kept going. And in one case, there was a lady coming across the street in the crosswalk on the other side of the intersection, and that person had to slam on the brakes to keep from hitting her. And I, I, we just need to do something at that intersection. Now, Mr. Brown has plans to up the visible, uh, alert to stop, but.
Yeah, we have discussed that, um, I think in our last week's meeting, that, of course, it is still a top priority. That is a top intersection that we want to focus on, to prevent any injuries, to prevent any crashes. So, um, yeah, that's something that we're going to continue to try to, um, like I said, if we have more patrols and also if there's some type of grant money that I can utilize, which we do have, um, focused on the whole downtown area and hit Sixth and Bullard Street. We do, we do know what it is a problem, and we do want to prevent anything from happening at that intersection.
Any other questions, Counselor Bedestone?
So it's not really a question, but it's sort of a comment, that I've seen an increase over, you know, as we move into warm, uh, whether the people think that they can just slide through a stop sign and go real fast, because they don't see anybody and then all of a sudden somebody's there, like a child, someone on a bicycle, someone who is, you know, has, is in the, as in the crosswalk. So, um, I would just say that, um, it's not just downtown, although it's really concentrate down there. I know myself, as I've parked on the opposite side of the street at Ford and Broadway, and I'm crossing, I have had people slam on their brakes so they don't hit me as they're turning left, as I'm going to the, I mean, I move kind of slowly some days. And so, um, people are, I, I don't know how we can, um, get us so that people understand that there's no need to rush around. Um, if there's really an emergency, you should be calling nine-one-one and, and getting an ambulance or getting whatever it is that you need. But it's a little concerning that everybody seems to think that it's best to rush around. And the other thing I've noticed is an increased use of cell phones when driving. So, um, I mean, I know that you guys work really hard and there's only a certain number of you, but, and I really appreciate it, but it just seems like every once in a while, people tend to forget and then y'all do some sort of a blitz and then everybody goes, oh, yeah, I gotta, I've got to do a little bit better. So.
Greg, yeah, I, I agree with you. I think consistency, um, of course, it is still a priority to target that, the use of cell phone distracted driving. That's one of the things that causes wrecks. It's statistically proven. Um, so yeah, so that's something we want to stay consistent with in educating the public and also attracting enforcement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Captain Portillo.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public hearings, but first, Counselor, please, please. But first, Counselor Ammon Smith has a motion she'd like to make.
I'm having, Mr. Mayor, but first I'd like to know if there are any other staff reports. Um, I see Mr. Torriello is out there. Is that going to come with the budget?
That's not going to be a problem.
Okay. Jim, double checky. Are there any other staff reports, Mr. Torriello?
Um, you know, I'm talking about the tourism and event coordinator that Kelly brought up. Uh, the town and the county was awarded, uh, fifty thousand dollars for a tourism and events coordinator, uh, contractor position, whatever it might be. Uh, the focus of this coordinator will be to, uh, coordinate, uh, between events and the different governmental entities that may be involved in an event within Grant County, such as the town, the county, uh, the DOT, the Forest Service, any of those entities on, on putting a, a product, uh, event together. But one of the biggest, uh, parts of the coordinator's position would be to gather information from the events themselves, uh, where people are coming from, how long they're staying, why did they come, a whole bunch of that, different kinds of information. And it'll be developed over time so that we can use this type of information, uh, hopefully next year for our lodges tax, uh, awards, things like that. Um, so for both the city and the county. And hopefully we can, uh, be able to justify the town and the county funding something like this in the future, so that we can get that valuable information. Um, so with that, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown, on my agenda, I have the property tax issue on item eleven B. Are you changing?
Yeah, you're in eleven B.
I can, I can do an hour in eleven B, whatever you want to do. Let's do eleven B, okay? Okay, I think you're fine. Thank you. Counselor Ammon Smith, you have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to take a short break.
Okay. Um, all of them favor, say hi. We'll take a ten minute break. Ten minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm calling our meeting to order, please. These breaks are useful because, uh, among other things, it gives us a lot of chance to conduct a little business, doesn't it? Um, the next item on the agenda is public hearings. Uh, we will be considering, by the way, before I, uh, read this, um, let me point out that public hearings have to be conducted in a real specific way. So I'll go through a kind of a laborious process of reading what we must do, and then we'll take it through a very structured, uh, number of steps to reach the point where the council will either approve or disapprove it. So please bear with me, and this is, this is something that is required. We will be considering the approval slash disapproval of PB seventeen dash oh one, a request for a partial subdivision platification of part of blocks two, six and seven, and all of blocks three, four, five, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen, and parts of Sotal Loop, Sotal Street, Tasahoe Street, uh, Sene Street, Agave Street, Ferbiena Street, Troya Street, Vicente Circle, Charmasso Place, Sacatone Street, and Cicata Circle, Rio Vicente subdivision, town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. The application, the applicant is the owner, Bruce McKinney, of Esperanza Hills LLC. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. First, the applicant shall present his or her case. Next will come witnesses in support of the proponent's case. The applicant or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes his or her case in chief, and will state that the applicant and his or her witnesses shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the appeal slash application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witnesses may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. Have any members of this hearing board had exporte discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communications from any party to this case? Let the record show that, uh, no counselor, um, has had any exporte, any exportate discussions relative to this matter. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise to be sworn in by Ann Mackey, our town clerk. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Would you all please sign this, uh, sign up sheet for the public hearing? Name and address, please. Can I do both my husband and I together?
And by the way, I would remind you that when you come up to the podium to address the council, please state your name, full name very clearly for us.
Okay, please raise your hand and repeat after me. He can't hear real well. Raise your hand. Repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I am about to give. In the matter before this council. Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Under penalty of perjury.
Who will be representing the applicant? Mr. Bruce McKinney? Um, please use the microphone, thank you.
I understood that the, the, the town's officer was going to give a presentation first. Is that not correct?
Jamie Imbick will do that, yes.
Okay, so, so I speak first and then she speaks first, sir?
Jamie, I think you should speak first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Mr. McKinney is the applicant. I've prepared the staff report for the town. Um, so this is the partial vacation of the subdivision that was created in the nineteen eighties, uh, Rio Vicente subdivision. And I would also like to clear up a little confusion we've had with people calling in. Um, the word vacation in this case means to cancel something. So, uh, we've had people thinking that we were maybe building vacation homes on the property or something, but in this case, the word vacation means to cancel. So we're asking to partially cancel, um, the subdivision that was created. Um, Mr. McKinney has purchased the property from the previous people who developed the subdivision as a manufactured home subdivision. He has thought of a couple of things to do, but none of them really worked out to his liking. So he is coming to you to ask to make this now six pieces of property. Um, there were a couple of lots north of the subdivision that were developed before Mr. McKinney, McKinney purchased the property. Uh, those are not included. Any right of way that provides access to those people is not included. And the town's property for the trail runs through there, and you'll notice on your survey that that remains intact. So really, uh, all he's asking to do is take a subdivision that was not feasible because of the topography and the development costs and make it usable land. Um, none of the utility companies have had any problem with it. None of the right of way was ever developed. Um, the sewer main that runs near there still maintains an easement for, uh, use. Um, it's a relatively simple request. Mr. McKinney would like, oh, also, I'd like to let you know that any future development will have to, um, conform to the two thousand and ten Land Use Code. So lot sizes, um, use table, all of that will apply to any new owner or Mr. McKinney's developments. Um, with that, I'd like to, um, also let you know that three neighbors have come in to talk to the office about it. Uh, Mr. Horton, who is here tonight, is in favor. Um, Heidi Ogoth called to ask if her property is included in it. It's not. It's only property owned by, um, Mr. McKinney and his corporation. Um, a couple of people have asked what a platification is, and I guess it's a partial cancellation of this subdivision. Um, also, a couple of people were happy, um, because the lots were so small, that something new can be done with the property. And, um, section six point two point one nine of the Land Use Code provides for this type of thing. And I'll read that into the record for you, so you don't have to repeat it. The town council may vacate or partially vacate a final plat if it finds that, number one, it is unlikely that the subdivision will be developed as reflected on the final plat, or that the required improvements will be constructed. Number two, vacation or partial vacation of the plat will not result in denial of access to any parcel offering legal access through streets shown on the final plat. Number three, the vacation or partial vacation of the plat is reasonable to protect the health, safety and general welfare. And the town council shall not vacate or partially vacate a final plat if it will adversely affect the interests or rights of persons in contiguous territories or within the subdivision being vacated. And once again, Mr. McKinney is the only owner of any property affected. So staff recommends that this application be, um, approved, as it satisfies all of Land Use Code requirements and will allow the owner to pursue other uses of his property in a manner better suited to the two thousand and ten Land Use and Zoning Code and our comprehensive plan. Uh, so with that, you have quite a bit of information in your packet. I will stand for questions.
Does the council have any questions for Ms. Imbick? Counselor Ammon Smith?
Thank you for explaining that vacation. Uh, so tell me if I'm correct. It sounds to me like what a partial subdivision platification really does is it voids the little lots and the little portions as they were described in the plat from the eighties, but it leaves in place all utilities easements, as well as roads. Does it leave in place roads?
Uh, in this case, it's only left a couple. Um, if you'll open your.
Open map?
Yes. Um, so you'll notice on the top, um, northeast corner, and Mr. McKinney can tell you exactly what they all go to. And then there's one that goes, um, right here that he left in place because it's, uh, kind of roughed in with the dirt and, uh, he thought that it might help, um, provide access to those. Um, nothing else was really ever developed.
Okay.
This, this is a paper subdivision in essence. Up north, um, you'll see the lots that have other people's names on them that are in light pink. They're not black. Um, those are the partial that are not affected.
Not affected.
So that, that's the reason this is a partial vacation.
So those are, those are pretend roads?
Yes.
And so those would be?
Streets in my office. So, uh, they're platted but never developed.
Okay. So anything that actually has not been actually developed or is currently being lived on, um, is subject to change, correct, with this partial vacation?
Correct. And Mountain View Road, you'll notice runs along the.
Along the edge there.
The edge. That, um, is not changing at all. That's, that's the boundary of his property and has been since nineteen eighty. That's the boundary of his property and has been since 1980s.
Okay.
So that's not affected.
And it doesn't block any other easements or anything like that?
No, and you'll notice that there's this piece through the middle here that's owned by the town of Silver City.
Yes.
And then you'll see the dotted lines are 50-foot sewer utility.
Yes.
So none of those are affected. This is the actual plat, though. If you do approve the partial vacation, it will be signed by the mayor and recorded as the county clerk. So the previous older 1980s version will get stamped by the clerk that it has been vacated.
Okay.
So if anybody ever wants to do research to buy the property, this will all come up.
Thanks, that was actually one of my questions, is what is the actual process then?
Yes. So beginning with title insurance, doing the searches, this will all come up.
Okay.
It's actually required in the Land Use Code that the previous one be stamped that it was vacated by the county clerk.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
I think that's it, thank you, for me.
Ms. Embig, how many witnesses do you have that will be speaking in support of the application?
I'm not sure who signed up in support, but Mr. McKinney is the applicant, so he will be speaking for himself.
Okay, so you'll be the first witness?
Yes, yes.
Are you finished?
Unless you have any other questions, did...
Mr. Brown, do you want to add anything? Mr. McKinney, please come on.
First, I'd like to clarify part of the partial, the reason this is partial, and that I believe that all of you have in your package the, something maybe like this that shows the original before it was done, but those in the audience may not see this. So this section right here, there's a little triangle here for everyone here, that section is not being vacated. And I just wanted to say why that is, and that is because the surveyor had a very difficult time finding the boundaries of this, and was gonna delay this hearing for several months, and so we decided to go with the part that was finished. And my intention is to go ahead, there are 10 lots in this area, and my intention is, in the next few months, to have a separate, when the surveyor completes that. So I just wanted to let you know that that's one of the reasons this is partial. There's also a lot here, right here, and a lot right here, for anyone, that is not included, and that's because they're unconnected, and it doesn't make any sense to vacate one lot at a time. So that's, that's just a preliminary thing. Now, but the bottom line here is that this map, with all this stuff on it, excluding this area at the top that's already been developed, that was developed mostly in the 90s, this is all gonna be gone. It's all, that's the end of what I think of as a horrible subdivision. It was, I don't think of whatever ever worked in the first place, because it has some, some roads that are too steep for day standards, it has houses, lots in the bottom of Arroyos, it's just, it's not a good subdivision. And right now, it's not very feasible to build a manufactured home subdivision, particularly on this terrain. And so, and I'm agreed with what Jamie Embig said, is that this is a 34-year-old subdivision, it's never gonna be built, it's time to get rid of it. And you're in complete control of what happens next, that if somebody wants to build a new subdivision there with larger lots, or a different plan, or put in a business next to the road, you're, you can, they still have to follow the Land Use Code, and, but they're starting over. They're not modifying this 34-year-old subdivision, they're starting with a new subdivision. And then the other question that you might have for me is, what am I gonna do next? What's, what comes next? And I'll tell you what, the bottom line is, I'm gonna offer this property for sale. And so if somebody comes along and buys the whole thing, that would be great. And, but I can also sell any one of those six lots by itself, or six parcels that are left by themselves, and if somebody just wants part of it, they can buy that. And then the third option is that the town has, part of the Land Use Code is a administrative subdivision where you can cut a parcel into two pieces, and you can only do one of those a year. You have to get permission through the, through the community development director. And so if I was still the owner and somebody came along and wanted to buy a parcel, that was a partial part of these, one of these six things left, then, then I could go through a process to split that and subject to approval, could sell smaller parcels. And, but it would be much better, from my standpoint, if somebody bought the whole thing. So I'm ready to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. McKinney? Counselor Bedison?
Mr. McKinney, really what we're doing today is we're just going to be vacating the 35, 34-year-old plat that had been done for the local homes, and dropping it into the six sections.
Right.
So that's all we're considering today, correct?
That's right. It would be, the result would be six parcels of raw land.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the witness? Thank you, Mr. McKinney.
Thank you.
Ms. Embig, are there any more witnesses that will testify in support of the application? Would you please identify, come up, identify yourself and proceed?
Hey, Horton, and I own the property west of this property. My only question is, what will the zoning be on that land after it's vacated? I know you don't have an answer right now, but I think that's real important, and we would like to know that.
Okay. We hope to be able to address that as soon as we, D and Z Committee, I guess they're the ones who would be addressing that.
Where?
Counselor Bedison?
If we could have Ms. Embig come forward to answer that question, if possible, or what the staff says wants it vacated?
Yes, Karen, it's currently zoned residential B, and that will remain in effect. It is a large undeveloped portion of property, so the zone change option is available. There is a question of six pieces. They're labeled A, B, C, D, E, F, G. They're not contiguous, which is, I think, why the labeling happened. So Mr. Scavron is addressing that also. But it is residential B, and all of that area is. And that will remain, we're not changing that.
Okay. That answers my question.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Are there any more witnesses that will speak in support of the application? Mr. Scavron?
Yes, I'd like to make one point, that when you make your motion, it's not just to vacate, there's two parts to this process. One is to vacate the existing subdivision and to permit six parcels. To permit the modification, it's a vacation with a modification, you're doing two things at the same time. You're vacating the existing subdivision, a partial vacation of the existing subdivision, but you're also allowing there to be six particular lots or parcels. If there had not been a vacation, the creation of the six parcels would be a subdivision in and of itself. So what we're doing is, you're combining what the applicant wants, which is to vacate what exists, turning it into a lesser number of parcels, six parcels. So that should be part of the motion. And then when the decision is written by Jamie, it will indicate that there's been a transformation from this subdivision to a non-subdivision of six parcels. Am I correct? Is that what you would do?
Okay. I don't know who's gonna make that motion when the time comes, but duly noted, thank you. Counselor Rade, did you have a comment?
No.
Counselor Tom? Ms. Embig, is that, would you please, do you have another witness?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have the sign-in list. I believe Ann has that, and she can see who is sworn in and listed to testify.
Okay. Please, please come forward, then.
Would be quite truthful, I'm not sure if I'm in favor of, or against. My name's Sandra Cook, and my husband, and we own a property at 905 Mountain View Road. And I'm not sure yet if I'm in favor or not. I like the idea of a bigger plat, but I have some questions. Can I ask my questions?
Yes, you can.
Okay. One of my questions is, if this goes through and he divides the land, can he then, are people gonna have to go through a subdivision processing again in order to develop it?
We know the answer to that, but Mrs. Scavron, would you address it?
Yes, and it would be under the provisions of the 2010 Land Use Code, which is more demanding than the law was back in the 1980s.
Okay, okay. Well, I personally would like to see it a lower density of people. So this map, the way it is, is just, it would be a nightmare. And like he said, you know, the inclines are terrible out there. It would cost him a fortune if he went ahead with this development, to develop it. So I empathize with him there, I really do. I understand his position. My other position is, according to this map, and I'm not sure, one came from the county, one came from the city, Mountain View Road runs through my property. So in order to get on Mountain View Road, people would have to drive through my property, which puts, which puts us at a liability. If they had an accident or something like that, and that concerns...
Ms. Embig, you want, I want to hear a review on that.
This came from you guys.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And I can show you, everyone in the office, or in the, who's through this map, these are not survey quality maps. They're often shifted to the left, right, or up or down. If anybody would like to see the actual pinned survey, that is what is being filed. And so often when you get the assessor's map, center lines are shifted, property lines are shifted. If you lined it up with an aerial map, such as that one, you would see that everything is shifted several feet. So what, this was to give you an idea of how many lots were there approximately where they are in relation to your property. And then the survey plat, which is actually pinned and surveyed in a legal document, shows everything where it lies legally.
I have that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have that.
So...
I even have measurements.
Yes, so they, this, Mountain View Road is not changing at all. Anywhere the pins were, let me show you on one of these. So...
It would've been nice to get one of these.
Um, they're probably in mail. These are untitled by the surveyor. So you'll notice that this says found stone in Mount Stone, found brass cap, found rebar. They're using the monuments from other deeds and documents in the survey or this survey. This survey took over a year to prepare because of the detailed work of finding all these previous monuments and making sure it was all in the same place.
The only bad thing about this is it doesn't own my land.
Right.
I'm still not entirely sure where Mountain View Road runs. And this is my parcel, our parcel, right here. It's 7.438.
So north of this one.
No, you had it right to the limit. That, this is north.
So these black marks on this plat are actually in the ground. So these are locatable, and then you can have your survey matched up to these.
Okay.
So we're not changing any historical monuments markers or roadways on Mountain View Road.
Okay. So this totally answered my question, if I'm liable if somebody has an accident on property that I didn't even know was mine.
So that, that wouldn't be affected by this action tonight, because these monuments and surveys and deeds are on file previously, so this is not affecting any, anything that existed before with Mountain View Road.
Right, right. Okay. Well, in that case, I'm okay with it, you know. I'm okay with you guys vacating it, so.
Any more about that?
Uh, no, other than I like the idea of a bigger section, the density would be less, which I like, and in view of the financial problems Silver City's having, I think, lower density would probably be much better. The city wouldn't be out a bunch of money developing this.
Okay, thank you. Does the council have any questions? Thank you. Are there any other persons that would like to speak in support of the application? Does that include, does that conclude your case in chief? The applicant witnesses in support shall remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board or by opponents to the application. Are there any persons who wish to testify in opposition to this application? There being none. Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all in affirmative. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Bedison?
Mr. Mayor, with some assistance from Mr. Scavron, to make sure I say this correctly. I move to approve partial vacation of existing subdivision. Do I need to read the whole thing out?
Yes, you do, and include the modification to permit the six lots.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a PV 17-31, a request for a partial subdivision plat vacation of part of blocks 2, 6, and 7, in all of blocks 3, 4, 5, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, in Plaza Soto Lu, Soto Street, Toseo, I'm saying that wrong, I know, Street, Toseo, yeah. Sienna Street, Agave Street, Verbena Street, Choya Street, Vicente Circle, Chamisa Place, Sacaton Street, and Sacate Circle, Rio Vicente subdivision, Town of Silver City, Grand County, the App County Senator Bruce McKinney of Espaços and Hills LLC, allowing there to be six parcels. Mrs. Scavron, do I need to read into it also the reason for doing this, that Ms. Embig had read into the record?
No.
Just say "first step," for me.
The modification to a lesser number of lots, a lesser number of lots...
Modification to a lesser number of lots to...
Resulting in six parcels.
Resulting in six parcels, thank you.
Do you have that, Ann? Do you have that, Ann?
Sorry. One second.
When you're done, Ann, would you read that back to us?
Allowing there to be a modification of a lesser number of lots resulting in six parcels?
That's enough.
Okay.
Okay. Did that fly, Mr. Cabron?
Sure. Is it okay? Okay.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Counselor Ayman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
Is there any more discussion of the council? We have a motion as read, and Ann, I'd like a roll call, please.
Counselor Bedison?
Aye.
Counselor Ayman Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Dunn?
Aye.
Counselor Connick?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Agenda item 11B is the approval/disapproval of resolution number 2017-14. Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. 2017-14, a resolution adjusting property tax rates within the town. Mr. Brown?
I think you skipped the NOI.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, I did. I'm sorry. Yeah, the next item on the agenda requiring action is the approval/disapproval of notice of intent, ordinance number 1259, and ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 2, Business Registration, title and sections 10-20 through 10-22, Article 3, Business License, sections 10-44 through 10-64 of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico. Counselor Ayman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start off by saying that in New Mexico, any entity that provides goods or services for some value exchange is known as a business. So in New Mexico, the term "business" refers to for-profit as well as not-for-profit entities. So this could be a sole proprietorship, a partnership, a limited liability company, a cooperative, or appropriation. This amended ordinance proposed here tonight, the NOI, is the result of a group effort of extensive work by our town attorney, the staff in the Community Development Department, and myself. And I want to let the public know that I've had input from a number of others, and I especially want to thank the Small Business Development Center and the Nonprofit Resource Group for their insights, as well as owners of some small businesses who give me feedback on their experiences of getting a business registration. In this NOI, in this proposed amended ordinance, most of these structures have remained the same, especially the annual fee of $35 for the large majority of businesses in town. There is an increase for some certain wholesale businesses. The reason that we did this work was to clarify some language, making it easier to figure out what a business entity needs to do, and making licensing and registration more seamless. In fact, now everyone would be getting a business license, and businesses that had a fiscal presence in town would be registered. This ordinance, this NOI gets commented on and the ordinance proposed into effect, it will enable the Community Development Department staff to streamline some processes. And this amended ordinance will enable inspections for public safety by the police chief or designee, fire marshal or designee, and our code enforcement before a license is granted, or at any time thereafter, in the interest of public well-being. So we especially included new language about businesses using or storing hazardous materials on-site. This amended ordinance would apply to any business, so I just want to say that be it a restaurant, or a rest home, a thrift store, or a big box store, an accounting firm, to a yoga studio. I couldn't find any business type that began with a Z, but accounting is the first ones that you think of with an A. So yoga studios are last that I can think of with a Y. As this NOI passes, I do encourage current business owners, as well as potential business owners, to read through it and get any comments to me. The actual ordinance will be put back on the agenda for adoption, probably in July, I think. So there's plenty of time before then for comments.
Does the council have any questions, or Counselor Ayman Smith?
Questions? Well, seeing that there are no questions then, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve notice of intent, ordinance number 1259, and ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 2, Business Registration, title and sections 10-20 through 10-22, Article 3, Business License, sections 10-44 through 10-64 of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Counselor Ray?
I... I'll take the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are there any comments or questions from the general public? I'd like to do a roll call on this too, please, Ann.
Counselor Bedison?
Aye.
Counselor Ayman Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Dunn?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item on the new business is 11B, is the approval/disapproval of resolution number 2017-14, a resolution adjusting property tax rates within the town. Mr. Brown?
As we've been discussing over the last two months, I believe, we've talked about the preliminary budget. There's a whole lot of uncertainties about our revenues for the next fiscal year, especially because here we are required to adopt our preliminary budget by the end of May, and they're having a special assessing that starts tomorrow. So we really don't know exactly how our revenues are going to be impacted. So because the only remaining authorities we have to generate additional revenue are through hold harmless gross receipts taxes, which we can't do until January, we would have to adopt them in October, for them to start in January. And all property taxes, which we've discussed throughout this process the last few months, I propose that we increase property taxes by one mill, approximately one mill. There's yield control formula that would decrease that amount of a mill, which I... Mr. Turrieta, the county assessor, will discuss in a little bit. But we have a deadline also to impose that tax increase, and of course, that is May 31st. As Mr. Turrieta reminded us at the last meeting, we do have a deadline of July 15th to rescind this resolution if we do not need it. But we're just doing this to be proactive, just in case it is necessary to be imposed so that we're not put behind the eight ball and have to come up with a bunch of additional revenues this next year. Counselor Ayman Smith, you look a little bit puzzled. What I mean rescind is if we rescind it by July 15th, this resolution, it will not go in effect this year if we do not need it. Also, in our preliminary budget, this revenue is not included in that preliminary budget. This is just setting ourselves up just in case we need it, so we don't have to come up with a whole bunch of extra funds and make drastic cuts if necessary. So I just wanted... Ms. Turrieta, do you want to talk about the property tax a little bit?
Mayor, counsel, my name is Raúl Turrieta, and I'm your county assessor. And actually, we did talk about this on the last meeting, and yeah, you do have until the end of July, once you submit your final budget, if you don't want that one mill to go through, okay? I did contact the Department of Finance and Administration, giving a breakdown exactly what's going on, and I'm just going to elaborate. You have a piece of paper that states, and I try to make it as simple as possible, and I did have a wonderful discussion with our mayor, follow that. Under section 737-7V3, authorities have maximum operation mills of 7.65 for all municipalities. Silver City is only currently using 3.825, and they still have a remaining of 3.825 mills, okay? So what it is, you can go one mill, two mills, even up to 3.85 mills if you want. So what I did is I actually pulled out what we call their PTDs, ones, twos, and threes. And what is that is whenever I certify to the state of New Mexico under the Department of Finance Administration, it's our net taxable value. Under the little blue where it says 2017, that is the actual value just in Silver City residential properties only, not non-residential, only residential property. It is now at $138,753,093 net taxable value. With that net taxable value, you're imposed, once again, at 3.825. That's what the rate is. Just like Manager Brown, due to the yield control formula, and I hope you guys did your homework when I gave you the yield control formula on the last meeting, on how property taxes cannot increase more than 5% due to valuation maintenance and net new. So if you look at the rate, .002661, it's generating $369,222, okay? That's if the rate would stay the same, and at this moment, the way the valuation looks, it does stay the same on the residential side. So under the... Under the .02661, there's your one mill. That's going to generate $138,753, a total of $507,575, once the rate, if it passes, or you guys go with it. However, the first year on the millage, you will receive the one mill, the total one mill. Once after the first year goes, the second year, it falls into the base value. Once it falls into the base value, that's when the yield control formula sets in. If the values are really high, and if our net new is real high, and the rate goes up, the yield control formula will actually bring the rate down. And that's the reason your 3.825 is at .002661. Any questions so far, Mayor?
Counselor?
Okay. For the year 2016 tax rate, you see the full value of a $50,000 house. Your taxable value is $16,000. So your total rate is 17818, $17 per thousand. So your taxes would be $285.09. All right. We're going to squeeze in that one mill. If that one mill passes, you're taxing only $16,000 because that's your taxable valuation, and it would only be $16. On an $80,000 home, it would be $26. On a $100,000 home, $33.33. And on a $150,000 home is $50. And on a $200,000 home, $66.66, and that would be for a year, for the whole year. Yes, ma'am?
Counselor Bedison?
Okay. So I just want to clarify that the .017818, that rate, is the total rate that includes Silver City, but we don't get all that money. But the second one that you just read out is what we do get with the increase.
That is correct. And the reason I did this is whenever they get their tax bill, once they break it down, I mean, it's very difficult to break it down to the municipalities, the county debt service, House Bill 33. To break it all down, that's total. So whenever they get the tax bill, they're going to say, hey, I'm paying $285.09. So if that one mill is added, remember, that $16 on that $50,000 home is going directly to the town of Silver City. And $138 million, okay?
That's per year, are you talking about?
That's per year. That is correct. So the reason I put $138,753,093 is that's your total taxable, net taxable value. There's one more line where it says the head of household exemption and the veteran exemption. If you create the rate, and that we're using 2016 tax rate, if you have the head of household exemption, you would subtract $35.53 if you only had the head of household exemption. If you had the veteran exemption, you would subtract $71.27. If you had both, add them and subtract them off to $31.09. And that's how you're going to arrive with your net taxable value.
Any questions? Anything else, Mr. Turrieta?
Matter of fact, I would just like to state that I have been talking to the public. I have stated that it's not the town of Silver City's fault that we have to go through these measures of increasing the mill due to the fact of what's happening through the state of New Mexico. People are understanding, and it is a very minimal tax hike. If you did about a three-mill, it would be a little bit higher than that. But for one mill, like I said, I have been talking to the public. The public has been responding, and it just, like I said, just goes only to the town of Silver City.
Thank you, Mr. Turrieta.
Anything else?
Other questions?
Counselor Bedison, you have other questions to Mr. Brown, right?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Turrieta. So, Mr. Brown, with the... For the first year, we get the $138,753, correct?
Yes. That's from the residential side only.
Residential, okay. So there's also the commercial. So we will kind of figure out that that's almost what you...
It's a little bit more than $200,000 that I estimated, yeah.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, because I have to say, until you said "commercial," I completely forgot about that part. But I appreciate Mr. Turrieta explaining the residential side, because that's usually where the concern comes from, our residents.
Yeah. And then as far as this resolution, I left the raising at two mill rate, I mean, yeah, property tax rate. So we're just going to add, for the residential side, it will go from 2.661 mills to 3.661 mills. And on the commercial side, it's going to go from 3.104 mills to 4.104 mills. And that's because of the first year, it goes up four mills.
All right. Any other questions, though, Mr. Brown? But that's for the first year, but then...
They're just...
That depends on the yield control formula.
And then they're just...
How that comes in. Yeah. That's important to include. Mr. Turrieta, you want to say something?
Residential side, none of the non-residential. And that's vacant land, manufactured homes, anything that's personal property. The only thing that I would like to add, not only this, on the residential side, you're actually going to see a 3% cap on top of that, and that's a very minimal amount per year, and that's just on the residential side only.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, counsel? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ayman Smith, are you going to say something, or Counselor Ray? Who's...
Sir, I have time. Hi, it's Kaye Pur. Thank you, Counselor Bedison. I move to approve resolution number 2017-14, a resolution adjusting property tax rates within the town of Silver City.
Have a motion, another second. Ann, would you like to say something?
Would the counselors please include the rate, because the resolution document doesn't have the rate?
Counselor Ayman Smith?
One mill? You have to read what's out.
The rate goes from... The residential rate goes from 2.661 mills to 3.661 mills, and the commercial, non-residential rate goes from 3.104 mills to 4.101...
Could you...
4.104 mills.
4.104? Okay. Let me begin again.
Those numbers are to make the resolution complete, but it need not be included in this motion, which also requires a roll call.
Right. So does my motion stand as stated, or should...
So does my motion stand as stated, or should I redo the motion?
No, the motion is complete. You don't have to add the wording that was just inserted. You now have a complete body of the motion. You don't need to, just the title is all you need to do.
Okay.
Would you read your motion again, Counselor Amon Smith?
Certainly. I move to approve Resolution Number 2017-14, a resolution adjusting property tax rates within the town of Silver City.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Connaught?
Yep.
Any comments or questions from the general public? We have a motion, as read, a roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Bedison?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Under New Business, Item 11C, is the approval slash disapproval of preliminary budget for fiscal year 2017-2018. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Council, basically what we're doing is, I've been presenting the same budget proposal for the last two months with no changes because we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, this later this week. But I did want to explain more in detail if you so want me to keep going over it. But I wanted to explain, especially like the general fund, some of the major changes, so you understand how conservative we were in budgeting this year. For last fiscal year, the final budget for 2017, we ended up with $800,000 beginning cash balance. That was actual un-audited beginning cash balances that was reconciled. This fiscal year, we're looking at an estimated beginning cash balance of $565,000, which is fairly low. Last year's budgeted revenues were $9.8 million. This year's budgeted revenues are $9.4 million, decreasing $400,000. Transfers decreased by $50,000. Transfer is basically an expense, transferring money from the general fund to a different fund for an expenditure in that fund. Expenses went from $9.5 million down to $9.1 million, so everything went down about $400,000 in budgeted revenues expenditures. On the next page, I wanted to show you the impacts of hold harmless. Basically, how it came to the $9.4 million total projected G R T for fiscal 2018, and fiscal 2013, adjusted gross receipts taxes with the 1/4% increase. I had to adjust because we had the rate increase of gross receipts taxes back at the end of fiscal 2015, so it was only a partial year. And then I wanted to adjust 2013 and 2014 so that you had some comparable numbers that included the 1/4% increase, so you could match apples to apples when we were talking about that. So with the adjustment in 2013, we would have seen about a $9.4 million revenue. 2014, we would have seen about $9 million. In 2015, we would have seen about 9.6 million. 2016, 9.9 million, which we actually saw. And for 2017, this year, we should have seen about 9.7, close to $9.8 million. But we're actually only going to see about $9.5 million because of the hold harmless phase out that we already are experiencing. So for 2018, we should have actually seen, without any of the phase out, about $9.8 million. But because of the phase out, we're going to lose about $329,000 to the phase out. So we're going to see about $9.4 million in gross receipts tax revenues. Not all of it goes to the general fund. About 80% of it goes to general fund. Part of it goes to the sanitation fund for the environmental gross receipts taxes. Part of it goes to the public safety, police and fire specifically. A portion of it goes to the 2011 debt service, and then a little bit to some other funds. The next page, you'll actually see the change in the actual budgets for each of the departments. You'll see pretty much a decrease in almost, basically every budget except the streets department. The streets department didn't see a decrease because last year, I messed up and I didn't include the temporary seasonal employees in their budget. But as far as all the other departments, except the Community Development Department, all those decreases in revenues are basically because of changeover in personnel or changeover in the actual insurance coverages that the employees have chosen. So the majority of the decreases that we've seen, the savings that we've seen, is because employees have gone to a less expensive insurance. Or the new employees, we've seen a lot of younger employees who have easily come in with a single insurance, or they're still of age, that they're still covered under their parents' insurance, because you're covered until you're 26 now, so they didn't have to choose the town insurance. So that's been one of the major changes. Another difference that we've seen in our budget that I did not budget was the salary increases that were in the contracts. In the general fund, that would amount to about $96,000. So I'm hoping that if there's no major changes in the revenue projections that result because of what's happening with the legislature, that we will save enough money to add to our beginning cash balance, that we might actually be able to still give those negotiated raises that were for the unions. So that's one possibility. And then this next page shows the actual changes in revenues, transfers, expenditures, those types of things, and the major changes, which were insurances and then turnover, those types of things. Do you have any questions on the general fund? The water sewer fund, the budgets are very close. I believe there's only like $90,000 out of a $4.2 million, $4.3 million budgets. So they're very similar to the previous year. There's no rate changes in the sanitation of the water sewer fund. Everything is going to stay the same as the current fiscal year. So we're not really looking at any additional revenue generated. We're just going to do business as it is. And then you'll see in the summary of the budget, it does look like a slight $50,000 increase, but that's based on actual revenues coming in this year. And then you just see in the expenditures, a total of 2% decrease in expenditures, all in employee salaries and benefits, primarily insurance and then turnover in employees, retirements, new, younger employees, employees with less years of service, which cost less. The next page is the water sewer fund. That is Appendix A, which is really small, but there's no change in it. It's exactly the same as the current year. The sanitation fund, again, it's very similar to what we've seen in the water sewer fund. The only change is we do have a slight increase in rates. The correction for all sizes of containers is going to go up $1.60 a month, okay? And so the additional revenue is about $80,000, and almost all of that $80,000 is going to additional maintenance. So the change in expenditures is basically additional maintenance for operating all four side loader trucks, the two for the recycling, and then we've got four actually for trash, which would be two side loaders and two front loaders for commercial that we run on regular occasion. And then the next page is the summary again. The only major change is the rate increase, which amounts to about 7%. And then as far as expenditures, we're seeing that the two increases are basically vehicle maintenance and gas, diesel fuel. And so, and then we have the $1.60 rate increase. And then in the back page, just changes in specific fund type groups. And with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions, counsel?
So the next step would be to come back at the end of July, when we have to have a resolution. We don't, it doesn't require a resolution or anything to submit the preliminary budget, so we can submit it as is without a resolution. But when we bring back the final budget, we have to do three things. One is to do a resolution with the town council approving the final quarterly report for fiscal 2017. Those will be the reconciled balances for all funds. Then we will do a final budget adjustment. Actually, we'll do the budget adjustment first, the final budget adjustment first, and then, which requires a resolution. Then we will do the final budget, final quarterly report, which will include the budget adjustment for additional expenditures or revenues that we sign in the funds. And then we will have a final resolution approving the final budget with all reconciled balances and any changes that might be necessary. Between now and then, the finance department will be reconciling the budget, but we will also be looking at the outcome of a special session. And between now and the end of July, we will start looking and talking about any changes that might be necessary because of what happens over the next few days.
Any questions? Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, sir, that's it.
Do I hear a motion? Counselor Bedison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2017-2018.
Is there a second? Counselor Amon Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comments or questions from the general public? Roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Bedison?
Aye.
Counselor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
A motion, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Counselor Bedison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.